Okay, good morning, everyone. Be calling this special meeting for September tenth, twenty twenty-four to order. I'd rather do the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna switch the pledge of allegiance before we approve the special meeting agenda. So if you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state in New Mexico is a symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Thank you. So can I have a motion for approval of special meeting agenda?
Sub motion.
Second?
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have Commissioner Edwards on the phone, correct? On Zoom? Okay, Commissioner Edwards, just if you wanna say something, since I can't see you, just go ahead and interrupt, please, and let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to new business, the discussion regarding tax rate twenty twenty-four. Our chief deputy assistant, Mr. Dureta.
Earlier, I was talking to you guys, if I could get about twenty minutes to talk about the tax rate, but our Commissioner Eloy said, I don't think so. But we just received the twenty twenty-four tax rate, and like I said, the only excitement out of checking out the tax rate is being here with you guys. So if I may, nothing really did change on the rates at all. So I know you had a few minutes to take a look at it. If you have any questions, please, please, let's make it exciting, all right?
You don't have a joke with that?
Well, the Jets last night, and now I know what the Jets stand for, just end the seasons, but that's another story. You like that, didn't you, Ann?
Like I said, if you want me to-
To go down the line, nothing has changed from twenty-three to twenty-four. Everything's pretty much the same.
Taking a look at it, yeah, you're right. Commissioners, do you have any questions on that? Comments?
Nope.
No? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and really appreciate it, and you guys have a fantastic day.
Okay, moving on to resolution B, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-four dash forty-four. It's a twenty twenty-four certificate of tax rate.
Chairman of approval of the tax rates is presented.
Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll call this special meeting adjourned. Okay. So I'm gonna call the work session for September tenth, twenty twenty-four to order. If you can once again join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state in New Mexico, the ZA symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to approval of the work session agenda.
Sub move.
We good, Commissioner?
Yep.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I heard you have a motion and a second.
Motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is purpose and public input. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting. In accordance with Grant County's Open Meetings Act resolution, we welcome public input. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda, and the forms are in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Anyone for public speaking? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to presentations under A, presentation for the community forestry project, Ms. Wick and Sarah and Maribel.
Hi, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Can everyone hear me okay on this mic? Oh, thank you, awesome. Hi, everyone, hi Commissioners, thank you for having an audience with us today. My name is Maribel Nadel, I work at Western New Mexico University, and today we're here to tell you about a five million dollar, five-year USDA grant-funded project that Western was awarded as a primary award, as well as our community partners, GRIP and IBIS, IBIS, I'm sorry, who will be carrying out the community forestry network. So the grant-funded program is comprised of three components, so the first of which being a certificate program at Western New Mexico University, which we are developing, which will give students workforce experience in entering the field of aboriculture or urban forestry. The second part of which is our community forestry network, which serves to achieve tree equity in six of our neighboring communities, that being led Lordsburg, Deming, Santa Clara, Hurley, Bayard, as well as Silver City, and the development of individual community forestry plans for those communities. And then the last component of it being creating and fleshing out the WNMU campus arboretum, which will serve as a living laboratory for those students who are taking the certificate program. So today specifically, we would like to share some information with you about our community engagement roadmap that is being carried out by our community forestry network planners. So we have Allison Seawick of GRIP and then Sarah Hertoe from IBIS. And also with me today is Eric Guyer, who is my assistant director for the project at Western New Mexico University. So I'm gonna pass it on to Allison, who can give you some more information about our community engagement process.
Thank you, Maribel, and thank you Commissioners for inviting us to speak on this really exciting project. I'm Allison Seawick, executive director of Gila Resources Information Project, and we're really excited to be partnering with Western New Mexico University on this USDA Forest Service project. And what I'm gonna do is just give you a quick overview, and then I'd love to introduce our team to you, so you have a sense of sort of who's working locally on this project, and then we'll talk about community engagement. So as Maribel said, the southwest New Mexico Community Forestry Network, actually, I should tell you quickly, you've got two things in your packets, just so you can follow along. You've got a fact sheet, which is an overview of the entire project that includes the Western components to the project, and then you also have this community engagement roadmap piece that will, you can just refer to, we'll be summarizing it today, just so you know what you've got in front of you. All right. So as Maribel said, GRIP is coordinating the community portion of the project, so we'll be working here over five years to build the tree canopy in our six partner communities to achieve tree equity. So what does that mean? We know that communities, disadvantaged communities, have less trees than wealthier communities, and so what we're trying to do is make sure that everyone here in southwestern New Mexico gets the benefit of trees, right? So the tree canopy provides shade, urban heat island mitigation, we know that, you know, urban areas heat up without trees, so trees help to provide shade, they also provide wildlife habitat, they help with mitigating urban stormwater, there's a whole host of benefits of trees. And so we are going to be planting a thousand trees in these six communities over five years. The other major goal of this project is to support community forestry over the long term, so that the six communities, as we move forward and after this grant ends, that this network has brought together all the practitioners and municipalities, et cetera, responsible for community forestry in our communities, support them so that this community forestry benefit continues over the long term. So right now, we are in the planning phase, and you can look at this sort of timeline of the project that maps out for you where we're at. So we're in the planning phase. Right now, we're developing community forestry plans for each of the communities, and then we're going to be implementing, the plans are gonna implement where trees get planted, and then we'll obviously be doing support. So with that, I do wanna introduce a couple of the GRIP team members. We've got Mariah Runnels, who's our GRIP tree stewardship coordinator, so she's gonna be coordinating all the on-the-ground tree planting, and then Denise Smith, who, she is our mining district community forestry liaison, so she'll be liaising between our project and mining district communities. Jackie Olaya, who many of you know is the Silver City Community Development Director, she is the Silver City Community Forestry Liaison. So that's what the GRIP team looks like. I also wanna introduce Sarah Hertoe from Integrated Biological Solutions. We are super fortunate to have her as a partner on this grant. She is the mastermind behind a major tree planting effort in Albuquerque when she was with the Nature Conservancy. She's got a wealth of knowledge, and we're really excited to have her as part of this project, bringing tree stewardship, tree care to our communities here in southwestern New Mexico. So I am gonna hand this over to Sarah to talk about community engagement. I do want to mention one thing, we have completed the website, SWNMforestry.org. So we've got community surveys up there and all of this information, that's really gonna be the hub for this project, so check that out. So with that, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for the invitation. I am really fortunate to be here, this is a great project, I'm really excited to bring my understanding of urban forestry to southwestern New Mexico and really try to make a difference in tree canopy here in this part of the state. The community engagement roadmap is a joint effort between my team, Jennifer Dan, myself, Eliza Kretzman, and then also folks from the Spatial Informatics Group, Natural Assets Laboratory, that are gonna be doing the spatial analysis on the community forestry plans. So what we have here are a few examples of the kinds of things that are in the surveys that you can find on the website. We, our team came together to create six individualized surveys focused directly to the communities and try to reach their needs. We really wanna understand where people are seeing problems, whether that's the need for tree maintenance, or where there's flooding from storm, stormwater, so that we can incorporate those things into the planning process and through our analyses that we'll be doing as part of the development of the plans. So these are just a few examples we've created for plant pallets to help give people sort of the context and the idea of what this could look like. These aren't the exact species that you might end up with, depending on what's available at the nurseries, that's always the trick, but it does give you, give us an idea of how to sort of create the look, the individualized look and feel of the urban forest that each community wants. So each of those things can be tailored to the community. So as Allison said, we have just kicked off the community engagement to inform the production of the community forestry plans. We started on Saturday in Hurley with the salsa showdown. We have nearly sixty surveys in hand already, which is really amazing for a one-day event, spanning all four of the communities here, the mining district and Silver City. So that's, that was a really great event that we were glad to be a part of. As Allison said, the website is up. We will also be installing large posters like this as information hubs in different community buildings in all six of the communities that will point people towards the online survey and also allow them a place to grab a paper survey and return a paper survey. So lots of ways for people to get their input in, they only need to do it once, and so we're hoping to get a really strong response to these community surveys to get everybody's input, so that the community plans do reflect the communities and what they want and need. And with that, I'll stop for any questions.
And I did wanna say, you know, when we started meeting with the, with each of the communities, we realized, wow, there are a lot of projects that are already underway, and we wanted to be able to provide trees to some of those projects. So to date, we've already helped out Swim Act over at the Bayard Union Hall, and we've planted trees and helped with irrigation there. Mariah and Denise are working with Hurley to plant trees and fix irrigation over at the Hurley E Street Park, and when we met with Commissioner Ponce and Commissioner Brown, the North Hurley Park was also something that the county was very interested in, and so we've checked that out and look forward to working with the county on, on the east, or sorry, the North Hurley Park. And then we're working with each of the communities, so Silver City's working on sort of what their priorities are in Deming and Lordsburg. So we're really excited to actually get trees planted a year sooner than what we had originally thought. So yes, any questions that we can answer?
Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair, thanks for the presentation. I realize you're not done, but you asked for questions, and you mentioned the constraint of the trees that are available from the nursery. What nursery or nurseries are you working with?
Excellent question. I think, so Mariah actually is, is working on creating a list of all of the nurseries where we can source plant material. We are in conversations with a few small growers to do some contract growing for specific species that would be useful and appropriate in this region, because not all of the native plants are available commercially, and so it is a tricky situation. We're fortunate to have a lot of expertise on this team, spanning all of these organizations to come together, and with our partners to create a really strong tree list, a list of species that is appropriate for each community. So we're, we've, that's why, that's why the plant pallets is just sort of a sample of what, what it could look like, and then through the process of developing the community plan, we will create individualized tree lists for each community.
So it sounds like several.
Yeah.
At least.
Yeah, and just to give you an example, Commissioner Brown, we are in contact and hoping to collaborate, for instance, with groups like the Upper Gila Watershed Alliance. They have a seedling to sapling program with a hoop house down in San Vicente Creek, and they're getting seedlings from state forestry and then growing those out into saplings, we hope, and trees over the long term. So we hope to work with growers, local growers like that, to, as Sarah said, have set up contract growing opportunities. And so far, Mariah has found a number of nurseries who are interested in that. So, you know, this also helps here with economic development here in southwestern New Mexico, right? Because, you know, we're, we're hoping that we're providing a market for, for tree growing, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you as we move ahead. Oops.
Commissioner Edwards, do you have a question?
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not, never sure if you guys can hear me or not. So I'd like to know if any of the trees that you're gonna be planting are fruit trees?
Yes, Commissioner Edwards, fruit trees, nut trees, we've gotten a lot of feedback that people are interested in those, so we will be, you know, trying to find nurseries who can source those trees. And again, that will be, you know, we're hoping to get community feedback from each individual community on what types of trees that they want, but yes, we've gotten a lot of feedback already on fruit and nut trees.
And one other question, or one other suggestion maybe is, we do have some schools, elementary schools in the county who have a real dearth of shade, especially around areas where students congregate, so I would really encourage you to look at those areas as potential planting sites.
Absolutely, Commissioner Edwards, yes, we have already taken tours, and the schools, elementary schools in particular, are on the top of our list for tree planting, 'cause we agree that there is a tremendous lack of shade at the schools, so thank you for that comment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome project, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
Okay, moving on to next item of, the agenda's going to be recognition awards, lifesaving efforts, our fire chief, Mr. Roger Groves.
So invited Chief Downer to assist me, since I needed an extra hand here. Is this turned on? There we go. So I wanted to recognize some of our firefighters who assisted in a lifesaving event that occurred in May at the Members Senior Center. And in the fire service, when a firefighter assists on a lifesaving, we issue them a commendation bar for lifesaving. So I have two this morning from the Lower Members Fire Department. Yeah, see, I told you I needed an extra set of hands. There we go. So as I call your names, if you'll come up, and we'll present your award, and then if you'll stay up here, I think they wanna have a group photo when we're finished. So our first certificate is for Charles Yulechny, Chief Charles Yulechny, from the Lower Members Fire Department. That's a commendation bar. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Our second firefighter, I don't know that she could make it, several of the award recipients couldn't be here due to employment and other things, is Jessica Escobar, also from the Lower Members Fire Department, and Chief, I'll just present these to you, and you can present them to her at the department meeting, if you will. So here's a commendation, and we thank you both for your service, having been involved in some of these calls involving CPR. It was an exceptional thing that occurred that day, and we thank you for your involvement and your participation. So next, we have a group of instructors that are volunteers with the Pinos Altos Fire Department. I wasn't here when this project started, so I don't really know the origins, but I think it was possibly Mr. Fuller was involved and the county manager and deputy county manager, but I'm not certain, but it was recognized that we needed to do some CPR and AED training. And so this group taught CPR to two of the senior centers, instructing eleven people at the senior centers, and also another eighty-two county employees were certified in CPR and the use of AEDs. So that's a pretty big feat. They're all members of Pinos Altos, and as I call their names, some of them will not be here. Michael Rains Jr. could not be here today. Chief Edward Downer. There you go, sir. And we have another award for you. So they're also receiving CPR Saves commendation bar. Larry Rubin could not be here. Olly Sternevan? Give him a hand, Lisa. There, Olly's. So thank you very much, appreciate your efforts. Initial, stay up here, we're gonna have a group photo when we get done. Jay Goatz. Thank you. And Jennifer Olson. That's yours. Right. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So also involved were Larry Rubin and Karen Rothberg, they could not be here today, they're running in a marathon in Albuquerque. So obviously, they stay pretty busy, but we appreciate the efforts that they have made in getting our, our staff here and the members at the senior centers trained. Shortly after their instruction, as you know, there was a, an incident at Members where CPR was conducted, and they saved the gentleman's life from a team of responders and personnel at the senior center who had taken the training. So, you know, it was well worth, whatever, whatever the cost was to, to get that done has already produced the saving of one life, and you can't put a cost on that, really. So it was highly beneficial, and I just wanted to recognize these members for, for coming out and doing those trainings for us here on behalf of the county. So I guess, are we gonna do a photo or something? Okay. Yes, if you want.
What do you want? What do you want?
Roger, if you want to stand here now. Come on down. We appreciate that, Roger. Take a picture and then quick run here at the end of the.
Thank you. You ready? Yes.
Oh, yeah, get in there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Father Lee. Okay.
Okay, moving on to next item on the agenda is going to be county reports, First Director Report Detention Center.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Good morning.
Detention Center currently, I have an update since we turned in the report last. We currently have five officer openings. We have two, we have one applicant going through the hiring process, one part-time position, and then we had one applicant that started yesterday at the detention center, started their training. Something new that we're trying is we took one of the 30 positions and divided it into two part-time positions. I know we've had trouble staying fully staffed, and oftentimes, we have to force in and force over a lot of our staff that can lead to burnout. So we are trying something different and having those two part-time positions that could rotate with the two other, with the four different shifts and fill in those gaps so we don't have to have so much overtime. We're going to try something new with that also. Also, we're attending job fairs. We're going to the high schools, we're going to Western. And I'm going to speak to the criminal justice class here at Western this semester. And also with HR, we're working on a recruitment video with SkyWest Media that we're putting the final touches on that, so we'll also have that available. And then we'll do another push to have a job here within the county. Accreditation update, we're still uploading to Power DMS and updating our policies and procedures. We did have about a two-week period there that we stopped because we had some staffing issues with some people being out and some people being sick. So admin had to fill in for that week period, but we're back at it doing the Power DMS now that we're winding down towards the year. And usually, we kind of do a slowdown, hopefully it'll be a slowdown. We're going to work really hard on finishing, updating all the, all the standards into Power DMS, finish updating the policies, procedures, and then schedule a mock audit probably the end of this year. And then schedule the actual audit probably March, April of next year, and that gives us seven to eight months to fix any discrepancies that are found with that audit, and then wrap it up for the end of last year and hopefully get a credit for the following year of 2026. On August 31st, 2024, our population was 96 detainees. Our average daily population for August 24 was 96. Our population has been kind of high and staying high, so we're looking at that, see if it's a trend that's going to last. As of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, we've had zero COVID positives. I know that there's been some flu going around, but we haven't had any COVID positives among staff or detainees. Our RISE program in August 24 had 21 RISE participants with nine in the facility and 12 in the community. There is going to be a recovery day this weekend there at Golf Park, and the RISE will be participating in that recovery day event. We're looking at completing the door slider replacement project here in October of 2024. We're also looking at going out for RFP for our shower project to redo the showers within the facility. And also have some good news on the portable building update. Scheduled delivery of the building is October 14th of this year. Currently, we're working with maintenance on the plumbing and electrical work. They, they've completed some of that plumbing and water work last week, and we're looking at completing the rest, getting that pad ready for the building to be delivered next month. Key event dates, we're looking at visiting Socorro County Detention Center here in the near future, either September, October. Last year, Socorro County did come to the facility and were trained in Les Lito. Socorro County, their warden, Eddie Garcia, is a friend of mine, and we both are at the DOC. So he's looking at MAP programming, he's looking at getting a medical in his facility, looking at going out for accreditation. He also was a RISE participant for the state, and he's also looking at developing a special response team. So he came down here to train for Les Lito. He met with our medical, saw how our MAP program went. They met with our RISE personnel. We'd like to go up there and look, run through their facility and go over their RISE program. I think we could learn a lot from each other. I know that over there in Socorro County, their RISE program is very active in the community. They're doing a lot of cleanups and painting and participating in a lot of community events. I know some of his detainees won a salsa competition and a cooking competition, so we're just kind of going back and forth on different ideas. He is going to come back and look at our building. The state's very happy that we're getting the building delivered next month, and now we're talking about next project to go within the building. And we're talking about maybe state providing a greenhouse for the detainees to grow their own food and stuff. And then when we choose the reunification with the CYFD for the kids, they can participate in cooking within that building, the food that is grown from the detainees in the RISE program. Mind, will continue any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next report be from our emergency manager.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll be kind of brief this morning. Currently, I have, like I said, four, four grants out there and haven't heard anything back. I did contact Department of Homeland Security this past week and the state and talk to them, and still waiting on to hear anything from FEMA. Haven't heard a word yet, so. But I did, I did talk to them last week, so we're still in the holding pattern. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, they updated that. We have in our last public meeting on the 17th and our last planning team meeting on the 17th. And once we get through that, we should have a draft copy for y'all to review probably in December, maybe early January to be reviewed and to make any changes to it, then it'll be submitted up to the state for approval. Let's see, I got good highlight of here, I've been collaborating with the Department of Homeland Security, our state. We're going to have field sandbags delivered to the county. I just, I got off the phone with them before I came over here. I got the first thousand coming probably in the next couple of weeks. I'm going to try to divide them out, some in the cliff area, some in the Members area, in the peripheral areas of the county, so we'll have easy access to them in the future. And I said, I get the first thousand coming, and we can probably get plenty more too. So once I get this first delivery and see how much room they're going to take up, I will, I will get some more ordered. And like I said, I really didn't have a whole lot, just waiting on here back from FEMA. As you can see, on September 9th and 10th, I'm doing, I'm in the middle of a virtual shelter training class right now, so. So I was a little late getting over here, I'll get back to that in a few minutes, but like I said, it'll be very brief this morning. Thank you all, have a great day. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report will be from our county fire chief.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. So current projects I've been working on are, our Upper Members Fire Department is doing an underground water tank storage project that construction has started last week, I believe, and we're moving with that. We have a meeting next week out there to go over progress and things on the project. Our departments, we had six, six of our county fire departments who applied for the fiscal year '25 grant application, which is funded by the State Fire Marshal's Office for various things. I believe some of it was apparatus and station improvements, bunker gear, things of those nature. So we should know roughly end of October, early November, what departments were awarded grants. I also submitted one as a county project for some communications equipment. And like I mentioned, we'll know October, November for, we were successful in our endeavors. Still delivering the ordinances and meeting with the various departments. It has been difficult to get to all of them because a lot of them meet on Mondays, so I can't be everywhere. But we're getting that wound up and meeting with all of our members out at the districts. I should have that finished at the end of September. Have started on a curriculum to improve our structural firefighting training here in Grant County. I've had several meetings with our instructor who's assigned to our area from the State Fire Marshal's Academy, and he's very much on board to improve and provide training here locally where we won't have to send people up to Socorro. Eventually, we might, but that's down the road. And so that's moving along very well. In relations to that, we had 18 firefighters who just completed the hazmat materials and operations training was the first class that I put on. And that's a prereq to do anything else with the Fire Academy or Fire One and Two certifications. So they should be probably receiving their notifications this week on if they were successful. And as I mentioned last night, that all of them passed, and I really hope they all did. So we've got a planning meeting September 18th to work on a incident command team amongst our rural chiefs. We've also extended invitations to our neighboring municipalities if they wish to participate. And I am hopeful that I'd be attending the New Mexico Fire Chiefs Conference later this month. In additions, a couple of things that have occurred after I submitted this report. So this morning, the Forest Service is doing some burns out in the area of Camp Thunderbird. So there will be smoke, there are burn piles that they're burning slash from previous thinning projects. And you may get some calls about the smoke or questions so that you're aware. That's a going to, that's going to start to, well, they started this morning already, so. And should be concluded in the next day or so. And I think that's pretty much the highlights, and I'll stand for any questions.
So I've heard you mention grants and equipment, but I know in past meetings, where are we on the equipment? Are we doing good there as far as bunker gear, helmets, et cetera?
For the most part. Our apparatus, our fleet is really in pretty decent shape. We do obviously have some equipment that's, that's aging, but it's still passing all the required testing every year. And, and, you know, the maintenance program that's being done by our volunteer departments is, is pretty spot on. So bunker gear, we've, we're, we're working on it. I know there's a number of departments right now who are looking to, to upgrade or increase the amount of bunker gear. Suddenly, our numbers have started to blossom. I know, for instance, Tyrone picked up 10 applicants in one meeting. And it depleted our, our resources there at Tyrone, so they're working to get some additional gear so that we can outfit, you know, adequately all of the personnel. But, but as a large part, we're, we're in good shape, and our fleet is in good shape.
Sir, any way you can, on your aging equipment, if you can get us a list? I mean, I'd prefer to start, or county manager, and you guys start working on our aging equipment now instead of there at the end of the day piling it all on there. So whatever we can help with, and if you don't mind doing that for us.
Certainly.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Huh? You got one? Go ahead.
Chief, is the Sapiro Fire Department responding to EMS calls?
They respond when they get them. I don't believe at the present time there are any EMS-trained personnel at that station.
But there are firefighters that's training CPR, stop the bleed and.
Yes, they, they are all required to have a basic first aid, CPR, AED, stop the bleed.
So they're eligible to respond?
They should be.
So I got a phone call from the Upper Members Fire Chief that wants to start being notified when we're up in that area. Can you check with the other fire departments, Lower Members and Sapiro, and see if that falls true with them? Because if they are, I mean, they're going to have a 45-minute head start on us.
Right.
So they could please just find out if they do want to be called, so we can call them out on the initial dispatch instead of having a delay?
Yes, sir.
If you could just find out if they want to respond, that way we can.
So based on an email that I received in the first few days that I started from Mr. Thornton from the EMS, I believe it's Region Two or EMS Bureau, regarding firefighter response and assisting EMS, that was forwarded to the chiefs. And so where some of the departments were not necessarily, they, they now are going out to assist your staff, and they should all have the basic CPR first aid.
There was a huge miscommunication on that, that, that non-EMS person not responding EMS calls, that, that was totally incorrect, and.
Yes, sir.
It falls short for our community that requests 911 services to say, just because you don't have a piece of paper, you can't respond. That's why you guys are trained in CPR and stop the bleed and so forth. But if you can just follow up with them and ask them if they want to be responding so we can get them out there, because like I tell you, they have a 45-minute head start, especially out to the Sapiro, out to the Upper Members and to the Lower Members. If you can, please get back to me.
I will do that, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Have a question. Commissioner? Chief Groves, so one of the many things that you're doing is, is assisting with code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
And after the, the fire that people aren't going to let us forget out here, and rightly so, there's a lot of, and I don't want to beat this dead horse, but I, I'm looking at a way to get more information on what citations are being issued without giving you extra work of making some sort of report. So could you give us an idea? Are citations being issued? Are these places being cleaned up? I know it's going to be a slow process. I know the, this one is going to court, the Rodeo Road fire.
Yes.
Is going to court, and we're going to try to make the owner of that property clean it up. But there's a lot of other ones that are probably a significant fire risk, not just the risk of property value and annoyance nuisance to neighbors and that kind of thing, but an actual fire risk and, you know, thinking about the possibility that one of those is going to get away. You guys did a good job fighting that fire, no doubt, but it was a, a big expense of taxpayer money, and so I don't know if you can shed any light on what progress we're making on, on getting owners of these properties that are, are just dangerous for fire to get them cleaned up.
So as we're receiving complaints, they're being forwarded to me. I'm going out and reviewing the area, checking on it. If I can meet with an owner, I will. I have not been successful in some locations, but that's what's doing now. I have not personally issued a citation. I don't think I have citation authority just yet.
Right now, with the lack of official code enforcement officer, we would rely on the Sheriff's Department to issue those citations. But what we're doing is we're following the same process that our code enforcement officer has been doing and has proved to be successful in many of the cases, is having those conversations, taking the ordinances to them, explaining where they're in violation. The citations are our last resort because then it's completely out of our hands at that point, and then it's, we're relying. that point, and then it's, we're relying upon the judge to make those decisions for us. Randy Hernandez shared with you previously about sometimes when those cases go to court, then the individual pleads their case to the judge, the judge gives them extensions to clean up. You know, a thirty-day extension may turn into a hundred and twenty days and nothing's happening, and at that point, it is out of our control because we've already cited and it is in the court's hands. So we try to do as much work through conversation, through letters, warnings before the citation. And it's been successful in some instances, but we'd like to retain that ability to continue to have those conversations and push those landowners on their own before citing them. But she'll be back in the next couple of weeks, and we'll get back to issuing citations to those that have sort of fallen behind.
Okay, thanks. And yeah, I might could address this privately, but the complaint form that people are, I guess, required to fill out, I think, I don't know if you've run into problems, but I ran into a problem. It says right on there that it's subject to IPR and it has personally identifiable information. Is there a way that we could fill out those, that the citizens could fill out those anonymously? Because it creates, it could potentially create quite a deal when your neighbor, your next door neighbor is, has an egregious junkyard that's threatening to, you know, to be a potential burn hazard that could affect your property, and then you're filling out basically a sworn statement with your signature, all your information. I mean, they know right who it, it just seems like it, I would be very reluctant to fill out one of those against Mr. Ponce, or, or Mr. Brown, or any of my neighbors, quite frankly. Because it just seems like it creates, so I don't know if there's a way around that or if you would accept an anonymous or not.
I mean, it, to me, it's more like law enforcement. Law enforcement will get anonymous complaints, still means you're gonna, you need to go look at it, so I don't, I wouldn't see the difference. Now, when you receive anonymous complaint, your code enforcement, law enforcement officer, those are the, the eyes and the ears of the public, and they can pursue it further, so I, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on that. I'll have that conversation with Ben on how we can update that form.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, we don't release, you know, addresses, those sort of things.
Yeah, but it says right on the form it's subject to IPR.
We redact the personal identifying information, but we can, we can, we'll work on, we'll work on updating the form. I, I.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Perhaps the solution could be more, it says subject to IPR, except for personally identifiable information. I mean, it could just contain that statement if in fact they are always redacted, so that people filling out the form realize their name and address won't be revealed.
Yeah, that, that would be, that'd be, I think.
And that way the county does get the contact information that it needs to follow up.
Right, good point.
I don't take the complaints with me when I go out to the visit, and I don't tell them who filed the complaint.
Okay.
Yeah. I make my own notes and find the locations, but I don't take the forms out to the field.
And neither does our code enforcement officer. That's our information.
Okay, very good.
It's subject to IPR, but we don't, we don't show up on site and say, you know, it was Billy Billings that filed this complaint. That's not how we handle these cases.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Most times if they throw a name, I just move on.
What's that?
They'll put a name out, they know it was the guy across the street or whatever, and I generally don't acknowledge any of that.
Yeah. And I knew there was cases like that, but you told me about it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
And I cleaned my yard Sundays.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Question about the, Mr. Groves' report. Thank you, Roger.
Yes, sir.
Very pleased to hear that Tyrone Fire Department had ten new recruits, and you seemed to suggest this was true for other departments as well.
There's been an increase across the board. I, even Sapiro Creek, I was at their, their monthly business meeting, and they had a new member, which came as a surprise, and it was a younger person, and they're largely senior members up there. And, but yes, there, there have all been recording an increase in applicants.
So the fact that it came as a surprise perhaps is an answer to my question. I was curious if you attribute this increase to anything in particular?
I think that has to come back to the actual district, people getting out there, talking to their neighbors, talking to the people that live in their areas and trying to recruit. I know for Tyrone, their situation was we had a station that was very low in numbers, and somebody got wind that they might lose the fire station, and they were very reluctant to have that happen, and they did some canvassing of the neighborhood, and right off the bat got ten people involved. So they've been on for a month now, and they're already, they're already into their training and doing a good job. And it's, it's refreshing to see that occurring and, and new blood coming into these departments. They've been stagnant for some time, and our numbers have been declining. So I, that's the situation that happened at Tyrone, and that I know for a fact. But the other ones, I think it's just from the departments getting out there and being visible. And, well, I can also say this, the PA Fire Department has participated in a number of events, public events at Golf Park in different locations, and some of the people have gone to these departments and said they saw the booth down at Golf Park that PA did, and they want to know if they could join Cliff Hill or Whiskey Creek. So, yeah, that has also helped.
It's great, great news. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to our next report, it's our IT Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In following up on one of our grants that we received earlier in the year, this was regarding our elections office and beefing up our security, our cybersecurity, we've been able to work on implementing redundant firewalls here at this building. We're actually on the brink of completing that. Right now, we have our second firewall in place. It's been programmed, it's actually handling all of our firewall activity right now, and as soon as we let this sit for about a week, then we'll be able to implement the other firewall, and we'll have them work in tandem. Basically, if one unit fails, the other one will kick in. So that will help us to keep our typical cybersecurity safeguards in place, such as like content filtering on web browsing and things along those lines. We've also been able to implement a security information and event monitoring tool. What this tool allows us to do is see events on our network that will give us insight on what's happening on certain computers. An example of that can be if a software gets installed that we know we didn't initiate, we'll get an alert on that. Or if somebody logs in at what seems like odd times to be logging in, we'll get an alert on that as well. So those are just some high-level examples on what this security information tool can allow us to see within our network. So with the implementation of these two things, we've been able to utilize some funding that we received. This is all in an effort to help us step up our cybersecurity, especially for the upcoming elections that will be happening. We'll benefit from this from here on out, but it'll definitely give us insight into the activities during that particular day and the events, of course, before and afterwards, too. Much better insight into our network. Aside from that, some of our smaller projects that we have going on, we'll be adding an additional camera out at the airport. So far, we have two of them, and we'll be adding a third to give us some better insight onto the activity, for example, out on the tarmac. And Rebecca can provide some additional insight on that, but it's basically stepping up our visibility in that area. Some of our larger efforts that we have going on this afternoon, we'll be starting our kickoff call regarding a financial rebuild within our ERP, our Enterprise Resource Planning Tool. And this will allow us to take another approach, a fresh set of eyes approach regarding the current status of the financial programming within this program. So we'll start with our kickoff call this afternoon, and we'll start with things such as when we can actually schedule the implementation of this effort, which will hopefully be as soon as we can possibly start. Aside from that, I've been working over at the detention center with our team on doing some cleanup in the data closets, making sure that we formalize how we rack our networking equipment, setting up a workstation for ourselves so we can be within these data closets to work with vendors on software upgrades and things along those lines. It'll help us to be a little more efficient in these areas instead of being on our cell phone and trying to type on a, on a laptop and connecting to equipment. This will be a little bit cleaner, that'll allow us to work a little more efficiently. We've also been able to correct some faxing issues that were ongoing there. We have three instances where we can fax over at the detention center and, and working in tandem with Western New Mexico Communication, we were able to find some instances where there were loops within that network that didn't allow faxes to be sent or received. It took a little bit of legwork, but we were able to figure out and align those properly so faxes could go and originate from the appropriate devices, but we're definitely in a good spot now. And we've also worked on doing some cleanup in the medical area in particular, getting some equipment off of shelves and putting them into actual network enclosures that will allow us to not only lock up the equipment, but to be able to rack it appropriately and be able to cable the equipment in a, in a cleaner fashion. It'll help us in the long run as well as far as connecting to it remotely and being able to troubleshoot items like that. So all in all, just basically some cleanup efforts that we've been handling over there at the detention center. As far as some key event dates, along with the sheriff's office and our emergency manager and our clerk's office, I was able to attend on the third and fourth of this month, the Secretary of State Southwest Regional Training and Workshop that they had over at the conference center. What this was, is it was a training on not only the physical aspect of what would we do under the assumption something happened during the election day and also before and after, but that, from the physical aspect. We also approached this from the cybersecurity aspect and asked the tough questions of what would we do under the assumption we had a cyber incident? So it was pretty enlightening to get insight from the Secretary of State, primarily with the mindset of touching up and developing even further an incident response plan, which is definitely in the works, and it's a document that will forever be a living document. But it was some good insight onto how we would respond. So I appreciated that, and it was a, definitely a pretty good workshop put on by CISA, the Cybersecurity Information Security Agency. Aside from that, I have some typical monthly membership calls for the elections infrastructure and the multi-state infrastructure this month. These are all calls that help us to stay current and aware of solutions and softwares that we can consider regarding keeping our network as secure as possible. So that's what I have going on, and I'd say at this moment, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Next report is gonna come from our county airport manager.
Just a couple of quick updates. Back at the end of July, we had our.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on.
Is it?
My mic's quiet. Back at the end of July, we had our annual inspection, and our inspector found that many of our reflectors on the taxiway were too faded to be effective, and she was going to require us to actually replace them. Well, we're in the process of designing lighting that's gonna be installed next year. The other problem is that the reflectors that we have are no longer made, and so they don't allow us to replace with a different reflector. They all have to look exactly alike, and with over two hundred of them at over two hundred apiece, we got creative and went and got some reflective tape and went out and just started cutting and pasting them together. And so for a couple hundred dollars, we were able to get that where she allowed us to keep the, keep them the way they are until we can get the lighting installed, the FAA. The other thing that was found during that inspection was that we had some transverse cracks on the taxiway that were getting a little bit too wide, and so we don't have that project scheduled until 2028. And so we were gonna be required to do crack filling, which we don't have any equipment or the means to do ourselves. So we went back to the state and asked for more money, of course, and so they are going to give us a grant so that we can buy the material and rent the equipment, and again, our guys are gonna be crafty and get out there. We think it'll probably take us about two weeks to work through, but we will get that taken care of. That's all from the airport. Any questions?
No, thanks for the, thank you for the photo of the reflective tape. That's pretty creative, and it's good to see when solutions can be found that don't cost tens of thousands of dollars.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next report's county fleet maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so for the fleet maintenance report, August completed projects. We had nineteen oil changes and inspections, twenty-seven diagnosis and repairs, five units had tires repaired or replaced, five blades with the cutting edges replaced. We also did a couple windshield in that timeframe. On September projects, we are working on the new blade operator pickups for them going into service, waiting for the radios and the gas cards, finishing all of that up. Our off-road diesel fuel tank alarm upgrade and certification is complete, so the new alarm and parameters have been put on. That brings us up to compliance with that. We still have a couple quotes out for a couple of service trucks, one drive-on lift. We're gonna continue to move the obsolete, obsolete units through option. Also, we're working on a cost analysis for some CVA agreements with Wagner on our heavy duty equipment. That kind of wraps up the county fleet report. Till we fill that position, I've kind of taken a point of contact for that, so if you know of anybody or anything, or people are listening to this right now, they can reach out to me, and I can get their unit scheduled or, or anything like that within the county. Any questions on the fleet?
No.
Under the county maintenance, you guys have walked through, the manager's office breakroom model is almost complete with just the exception of the chairs and tables that the maintenance crew's putting together now. So came out really nice. I just want to thank the team in the maintenance department for getting that remodel done kind of in-house and helping us out on the cost of things. So it also comes out of that account that you all approved for us to use for construction rehab and doing in-house projects, so we appreciate your guys' support and keeping that fund, funded. So we are also completing on the courthouse and second floor hallway patch and repair and paint up there. So the courthouse is coming a long way. It needed a lot of painting and patching, especially with that fire alarm upgrade that we did. So if you guys ever go through there, you can see that Macario's working very hard on that. We've repainted a lot of the outside parking lot lines, patching some asphalt there, just a lot of deferred maintenance issues that we've gotten to take care of. We're also prepping the fairgrounds right now. We're just about done with that, getting in preparation for the fair to get kicked off next week. It's a huge team effort with the fair board, county maintenance, just a lot of things happening out there to make sure that that all gets ready for all the fun festivities out there. I was gonna give you a quick update on the, the fairgrounds electrical install. I know you guys probably haven't heard anything about that in a while, but we finally got PNM to finish that project out there as in far as in getting the primary to our property line. So now I can move forward and have a scope of work put out and get contractors to bid. I think, I don't want to say post-COVID anymore, but I will say it, those electrical panels that are that high amperage, three hundred fifty amp that we're looking at, those are usually ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty weeks out. They don't make them until they're actually ordered now. So once we get through this fair, I'm pretty confident we're sitting in a good spot where we can get that project executed. So just wanted to bring that up. Also, as Mr. Adizola reported, the rise building site work, we've started that and getting that ready to get the concrete pad and runners poured and get that finished up. So preparation for that October fourteenth, the delivery date. The future projects, some of them remain the same. So as soon as the winter comes and we slow down on the outside things, we'll be working on, especially in this building, on the inside, working on getting all the porcelain replaced, flush valves, new faucets on the sinks and all the. porcelain replaced, flush valves, new faucets on the sinks and all the bathrooms. A lot of it was based on what we bought was for energy or water consumption efficiency. A lot of, I think in its early 90s is when this China was replaced in this building, when it was first put on online. And so there's a lot of new technology that's been out to save water. So that'll help us out with our water conservation efforts. Also holding cell design and install at the courthouse, we'll be looking at that as well, just trying to get some things worked out there. I stand for any questions on the maintenance side of things.
Keep going.
All righty. So road department. Let me see if there's a picture. Let me see how they have this. Oh, yeah. So there's some site work pictures if you guys want to see that of getting some of the utilities installed beside the detention center for that building. David and James working in the break room.
Jason, I can't hear you.
David and James working in the break room. And then that previous slide, that was us getting the utilities ready for, you know, putting in the sewer and some water lines for that rise building. Then on to the road department. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Medina, I'll be happy to report that we are about 95% complete with the noonday project. I know you've been really interested in that. So we only have about $25,000 left to expand out of there and finish putting some more material on that road and one more concrete runner on our low water crossing, and that project will be complete. So happy to say that. We're also just, you know, we're continuing on the routine blading of our roads with the moisture receiving spot on, you know, some of it's, you know, two inches in an hour, which that kind of hurts us. But a lot of it, when we have the smaller rains, it helps us with the blading and making sure we get the material compacted back on roads. We're also continuing the mowing of the roadways. We're full force and just making sure that we're addressing issues like the Mangas Valley. That gets grown up really, really fast. And so we're moving out from the member's towards the Mangas Valley and we'll have, we'll be doing the cliff area in the next probably month or so. So just so you all know. Our chip sealing project was a success. If you guys can look at some of those pictures that we have on there, Ridge Road, you know, oil going down. So maintenance team helped out the road department. And a lot of these, a lot of this project, you know, it went very, very well with a great team effort. So I just want to thank all the employees of the road department and the maintenance department for assisting with traffic control. We will be continuing doing some fog sealing tomorrow and Thursday to go over the top of these roads. It's something that we're going to do a little bit above and beyond just going to chip sealing. We can get another two to three years out of this by putting a fog seal coating on there before we went to get it striped. So showing those pictures right there. And that concludes my report for the road department. I stand for any questions.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Guess that's our director's report. So county manager, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have your draft agenda for Thursday in front of you. We have rearranged the agenda to begin with an executive session for pending and threatening, pending and threatened litigation, Stephen Erickson versus Grant County. The reason for that is we will have the attorney give you an update. And I'd rather not pay him several hundred dollars an hour to wait till the end of the meeting. So we've rearranged and he'll be on Zoom to present to you. Your agenda looks a little different this month. Been having conversations over the last few months with Chairman Ponte. So you have a consent agenda, and this hopefully will help your meetings move a little quicker. So in the consent agenda, you will be approving your minutes, the expenditure report, asset deletion and transfer requests, and indigent health claims. Did you want me to go through those? Or typically it would be you would review those. And if there's any reason that you would need one of those items to be discussed, then you would move on Thursday to remove an item from the consent agenda and act on it outside of that.
I mean, no, I would think we can look at it. Just the only thing that I want to make sure that commissioners understand that when we get to this item, if they want to pull something off of it to discuss in a little further, then that can be done. So just remember.
I like this. This is great.
Quick question about it. For seven and a half years, we have adjourned to become the healthcare claims board, and then we re-met as the county commissioner, which I've never understood. Now we're putting that item into consent agenda. Does that mean for seven and a half years, we've been doing nonsense we didn't have to do?
Well, it can go both ways. This is the only county that I've ever worked in where it's been done that way.
I'm super happy not to do it that way. I just can't believe we did it for so long we didn't have to.
I agree. You have to pay them no matter what.
Right. Okay. Well, I should have raised that question seven years ago.
You know, the good part too is if you look at it, and I think Veronica's done a great job and staff with the amounts have gone down to where we don't, we're not questioning why we're paying eight, nine, $10,000 on these. Thank you.
So I had a quick, or maybe you're going through all of them. I had a question about reorganizing since along the same lines as putting the pending litigation early. Commissioner Edwards has something else going on Thursday. And if you're still on, Alicia, you can bolster what I'm saying, but she did make a request that the Resolution 2449 be moved up as early as possible so she can weigh in on that one before something else she's got going on.
We can do that on the approval of the agenda, correct? We can just move it up right before proclamations and after publicly put?
Okay.
Does that work? Does that work, Commissioner Edwards?
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to proclamations, just item C, consideration of proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We do this every year. Also, this time, we always do a proclamation for Grant County Fair Days, and we will do that as well. Presentations, we would like to acknowledge, formally acknowledge Rebecca Winger receiving the New Mexico Airport Manager of the Year. We haven't been able to coordinate schedules and to formally recognize her efforts on that prestigious honor. You will have your regular Gila Regional Medical Center report. Well, no, you won't. It is, Christie should have emailed you and also provided the reports. Mr. Whitaker will be out of town. Next item, new business. Item F, consideration of amendment to the GRMC Board of Trustees bylaws. At the August board meeting, the Board of Trustees, there was considerable conversation regarding the past two appointments that have been made, and both individuals either moved out of country, moved out of state. And so that position had to be read advertised, and you had to appoint another replacement to complete that term. Their discussion was to require that the individuals live in Grant County so that when the individual applied for the position, they knew that they had to remain here. They knew that they needed to be able to be present. I'm open for any suggestions or comments, or we thought it was a simple fix, but some conversation with some of you, perhaps not. So I'm happy to take back whatever your amendments are.
You know, the problem I have with this piece here is to amend bylaws stipulate a Grant County, New Mexico residency requirement to be appointed to the Board of Trustees. What I have a problem with is Gila Regional does service Katron County, Hidalgo County, possibly even Luna County. I know that Katron County does go a lot towards Agoro. Hidalgo County goes a lot towards Deming. But at the end of the day, if we do have, or we do get an applicant from, say, Hidalgo County, Katron County, or Luna County that has an interest because they use the facilities, I would like that to be open for them also to be able to be a member of the Board of Trustees. So that's my biggest thing here. I understand what they're talking about with these two instances that we've had. You know, I don't think this really does anything to having trustees on the board and they accept employment or out of town or somewhere else. It's not, you know, the hardest thing to go ahead and, you know, appoint somebody else to the Board of Trustees during that time. So I have a little concern with that, just making it to Grant County. That's pretty much the way I feel. You know, in times, at the end of the day, we also have problems with even getting candidates to fill the Board of Trustees. I haven't seen that so much of an issue. The last one, we only had two candidates that applied. So that's where I'm at. And I just wanted to let my fellow commissioners know that I don't think it's such a big deal. I think that during our questioning or when we have questions or somebody interested in the board wants to present to us, I think our biggest thing is if you're from another county, do you have the time and can you attend these meetings? And can you provide that to your fellow Board of Trustees to show up? So that's my piece with it. But I can go with whatever the other county commissioners want to do with that. But that's my reasoning behind this. Commissioner Brown?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks for introducing this, Charlene. I think I share the feeling you just mentioned, Mr. Chair. And even more, I would hate for us to eliminate the possibility that someone with rural healthcare expertise, whether it be finance or legal expertise or even medical expertise, I'd hate for us to say that person could not serve on our board. I also don't like saying no to what the Board of Trustees has presented us. I do wish we'd had a chance to consult with them about this. We had a joint session not that long ago, and I didn't hear anything about this. I did have to leave early. Perhaps it came up towards the end of that meeting. But I think part of why I'm saying all that is in my role on the Board of the Alderleapole Charter School, we have had very productive participation by a member of that board who lives in Las Cruces, but is who's an expert in charter school, education, statewide policy. And she contributed a lot. She was very responsible, attended the meetings by Zoom every time. And based on that experience, I would say you could potentially have a very good member of our hospital Board of Trustees who didn't happen to be a resident of Grant, Luna, Hidalgo, or Katron Counties. So I would be inclined not to support this amendment also. Thanks.
HMS, when we met with-
Yes. Hold on, Commissioner Edwards. I got Commissioner Medina talking.
So when we got the opportunity to meet with the HMS Board a few months ago, they had representation from Hidalgo, they had representation from Grant, they had even somebody from Katron, I believe, which actually was a diverse group of individuals that brought representation to all their counties. So I mean, I got to agree with the chair that having representation, if they have an interest in it, could exclude losing a valuable member of that Board of Trustees. That's all I have.
Yeah, I agree. It's a regional hospital, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
So I just wanted to say that I also agree with everything that's been said. I can't support this because I don't want to limit our access to expertise. And I also agree with Commissioner Brown that I think this is the kind of thing that we need to have conversation with the Board of Trustees about before it comes in front of us. Because I don't like us having to say no to something that has already gotten as far as our agenda before we've had a chance to discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I would add is part of the issue with the last individual was they have not been participating via Zoom. They say they're going to, and then they miss several meetings, and then they are nonexistent. So I will, it's my job to be the one communicating. That's why you have me there. So you can put this on me. I will take this back to the board and explain where you're coming from. And perhaps there's something that, you know, we need to beef up around if you say you need, you can't miss. And then there is some language in the bylaws about not missing X number of meetings and then being removed. But this conversation today, I, sorry, our office needs some direction of in the future, when we have vacancies, where do you want this advertised? And how do you want it advertised? Because we've never been provided any direction to advertise outside of Grant County. So what are your thoughts on providing, like what direction do you want this to go? Do you want it in three counties, four counties? How do you want us to, how do you want us to do this moving forward?
So I think moving forward because of what we've all said, I think it should be advertised Southwest New Mexico, which would be Hidalgo, Luna, Katron, Grant County. And I think we should at least open it up to those counties and go from there. The other thing there, and I do agree with the other commissioners, maybe we can table it too. And that's here, what our trustees have to say and go from there. But I think that in, if I'm misspeaking, please let me know. But I think that the advertisement needs to go to the other counties if we're going to open it up this way.
Well, I don't think there's any need to table it. You've made it very clear that you don't want to limit it to Grant County. And that was, that was the thought of the board to solve part of the issue. So I think we can accomplish trying to make sure that participation of someone outside a county, I think there's maybe something else we can do. I'll take this back to them and explain where you're coming from.
And the only reason I asked to, the only reason I was, I made the mention to table it was because I have two commissioners that are saying that they wanted to hear from the Board of Trustees. And whether it passes or not next time, that's going to be up to us with the vote. But for right now, maybe if the other commissioners feel okay with it, I don't mind rejecting it. I really don't because I'm not going to support it anyway. But I just have to follow some of the wishes that my other commissioners want also as far as, you know, wanting to hear from them and being open-minded about it. That's the reason I went to tabling it.
We're meeting with them every three months or-
Right.
Every six is the joint.
Oh, every six. Okay.
Every three they're supposed to report to.
Right.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. I think tabling sends a different message than rejecting, and I prefer that message. Gives them a chance to amend their amendment also without us having to say in a public session, no. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Medina.
Hey, Charlene, when it comes-
Hold on, Commissioner Edwards.
Charlene, when it comes to, when it comes to picking the board, can we ask for a representative from Katron and from Hidalgo? Since it is, Mr. Billings made the comment, it is Gila Regional, which we probably serve Katron, Hidalgo, and Grant County. They're probably 90% of our business versus Luna County. Could we add a specialty board member to this to make it-
Well, you have to remember that the hospital funding act specifies five, seven, or nine members. I believe it's your prerogative where those members come from, but you can't just add another one because that would be the wrong number.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Could we ask for one front?
That is, that is your choice to make. You're the ones that appoint that, appoint that board.
I just thought you'd have a representation from the three counties that we serve.
Commissioner Edwards?
So I appreciate the- So, um, I appreciate the thought behind, uh, tabling it, um, but I don't actually think there's any point in tabling it, um, because it says pretty clearly what it is they want us to do, and we don't agree with that. Um, I also think that there's a danger in tabling it that we would come back and say, well, there has to be somebody from Catron, Luna, Hidalgo, and Grant County on the board, et cetera, et cetera, which gets us down into weak themes on, you know, the number of board members, et cetera, like, uh, the county manager said. Um, I think the way we handle that is to make sure that we advertise it regionally and encourage people to, uh, uh, participate regionally, and, um, that's something that the Board of Trustees actually should take seriously. Um, the other thing is, um, I just want to mention that, uh, it's a governance issue. If they have people who are not attending the meetings by Zoom or in person, however they are supposed to attend, uh, it is the Board's job to use the bylaws to remove that member for non-attendance. That is not a bylaws change that needs to be made, it's a governance issue that needs to be carried out.
And Commissioner Edwards, um, the, the last individual was asked to resign due to lack of participation.
That's correct, that's what they should be doing, for sure.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Billings.
And to what Commissioner Edwards is saying, um, yeah, you could have a local person right here in Silver City who wasn't participating, so doesn't really, the, where you're living doesn't matter so much. Anyhow.
Anything else on this?
No, we'll just take it as it comes on Thursday.
Next, item G, consideration of amendment to MOU with the Sixth Judicial District Attorney's Office regarding ARPA funding.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. Before you, you have the Third Amendment to the ARPA funding that was allocated to the District Attorney's Office for their Veterans Treatment Program. Um, they were awarded this funding back in 2021. Currently, they have a remaining balance of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents available for use. They're asking for an extension, the, this current, the Second Amendment expires September thirtieth of this year, and they're asking for, um, to extend it to March 2025.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
What was the money originally allocated, and what is their reasoning for not having spent it by the deadline?
Remember, the money was allocated, it was a hundred, a hundred thousand, that was for the Veterans Court, for our veterans that were going into the system to provide some assistance for them.
Veterans Court project?
Yes, a Veterans Court project.
And so they've had a lot of time to spend this money, why hasn't it been spent?
Well, I think that some of the conversation I've had is, is certain, judges have changed, uh, and then, you know, they've come across some, uh, you, you know what, they've come across, uh, just those things that needed change for them to get it back on track, unless you've had a, a more conversation with them. No, so they, they've, they've been trying to get on this project, and they've had certain things changing within the project, certain things it can and can't do, so they, they, they're tweaking it to continue trying to provide these services.
So I guess my concern is that, um, well, I'm not exactly sure how to articulate this, but the fact that they haven't spent it means they haven't provided services, and that's my concern.
Yep. If you want, you can, um, try to, uh, get ahold of, uh, somebody from the DA's office to give us a, a quick presentation when we come to this item to help us make a decision.
I would really like that. I'd like to hear from them, um, their justification for this.
Okay, yeah, you'd get a better explanation than what I'm giving.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now, don't let me forget to do that.
Or we can, we can reach out to them, if that's easier. Maybe you can reach out to Mr. Ratonera, and we'll reach out to the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Next on, oops, yes, ma'am.
I'll just, I'll pass you my comment.
Okay. Uh, next, item H, consideration of agreement A twenty-four thirty-seven, New Mexico Department of Transportation Maintenance Agreement, roadway lighting. This agreement is for, uh, to provide maintenance for roadway lighting on, um, height, uh, one-eighty, beginning at mile post one sixteen point two-four, ending on mile post one eighteen point eight-four. It's a total of forty-two lights. This is part of the safety project that, um, DOT obtained some money, um, that will do some work within the town of Silver City, and then provide lighting, um, on several intersections with US one-eighty, starting at Delk Drive, Casa Loma, Arenas Valley Road, Morales Road, Real de Arenas Road, and ending at Arenas Valley Road and Yucca Valley Road on one-eighty. And so this is the standard DOT, um, agreement that we've entered into previously. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, but I don't know exactly how to phrase it. I provided written input into this project, um, and I know other members of the public had, uh, requesting that there be a special effort to make sure the lights that are used don't detract from our dark skies. Um, I feel like the projects, the project that was done by Walmart, the project that was done on PA Road south of Thirty-second Street, were over the top, way more lighting than is needed. Uh, this is also a safety issue. I don't know if you all had the experience, you go from those brightly lit areas into the darkness that follows immediately, and for a moment there, you can't see very well. So for a purported safety project, I feel like the design hasn't been that great. I never got a response to my input about those issues, uh, and I have no idea if you know whether anything like that was considered in this project.
So it, it was brought up, and, um, Andrea reported on that a couple of meetings ago. It was brought up at the public hearing, and they did provide a response that these, um, these particular style of lights, um, are, meet the requirements for dark skies. Um, so they did, they did, they did address that.
Okay. Um, that might have been the meeting I missed, I don't recall Andrea's presentation.
It was the one that was for an extended amount of time, and it wrapped up in a very short amount of time, I think when you-
Oh, no, I knew, I tried to go to that public meeting, for sure. What I meant is I missed Andrea's report about it, but-
I also followed up with an email to everyone, so it's in there as well.
Yeah, that's right. I, I already complained to them about the fact that they said two hours, and they wrapped up in half an hour. Okay, thank you, Andrea, thank you, Charlene.
Anything else on this? No, okay. Moving on to resolutions, um, item I, consideration of resolution R twenty-four forty-five, supporting the New Mexico Counties twenty-two-five legislative priorities. Each year, uh, the New Mexico Counties, um, ask that each individual county has, uh, pass a resolution supporting the New Mexico County Legislative Priorities. So in your packets, you have a, a little fact sheet showing those priorities for the twenty-two-five legislative session. There are several items under HB two appropriations, detention reimbursement fund, which we talk about every year, um, interesting, um, figures there. The average five-year cost that counties are spending to house, uh, New Mexico Correctional Department inmates is eight point two million. The current fund is at five million. It was increased last year, but we would like to continue advocating to increase that to, uh, cover the, the housing costs. Also requesting, uh, continued funding to AOC for courthouse funding, um, requesting continued funding for the newly formed Corrections Workforce Capacity Building Fund, which is currently administered by DFA. Also, um, continued funding for the Fire and EMS Recruitment Fund, ensuring that SB one-fifty-one, um, that was a redirect of, uh, premium tax from health insurance to, um, increase the amount in the EMS fund. Um, as you know, the EMS fund gets very little, uh, to operate on, and so this would increase that fund. And then also, uh, continued funding for, uh, monthly operational costs for the seven-hundred megahertz radios, which is a state inter, interconnectivity, um, infrastructure issue from local governments to state governments, and just, um, improving that, um, communications. Uh, the other item is equitable disclosure. You've all, um, should have seen emails coming across, there's been a series of, of meetings , uh, throughout the state to discuss, um, equitable disclosure for the assessors. And so what this does is it's treating residential and non-residential property transfers equitably to allow for the assessor's office to evaluate those, those properties. Right now, that doesn't exist. Um, so the assessor's affiliate's been working really hard on that for the last few years, and, uh, the New Mexico Counties Board has made that a priority. Uh, next, IPR improvements. Um, so statewide, we're continuing to, um, local governments are continuing to be bombarded with IPR requests, and so we're continuing to chip away at that and try to make some improvements, um, on the, uh, IPR laws. And the last, uh, the last priority is resources to support border-related humanitarian and crime efforts. Um, this is requesting five million to counties, uh, for services to provide, provided to state and federal agencies to support border humanitarian and crime efforts. I don't know much about that one, and Commissioner Ponse could probably elaborate on any of these as he sits on the Board, but that would be the priorities, and, um, it would be our recommendation to support those moving into the twenty-two-five legislative session.
I have a question about the equitable disclosure.
I probably don't gonna have an answer for you on that one.
Okay.
But try it.
Well, so the chief deputy assessor keeps telling us we're a, a nondisclosure state, uh, but this implies that currently we're partly a disclosure state and partly nondisclosure. Am I missing something? Matt, seems like this is suggesting that currently we get information on residential property transfers, but not on non-residential? And I did not think the assessor was allowed to use information on residential transfers either. So mostly, I'm curious.
So I can't speak to that completely, other than the thirty-thousand-foot view that I understand, and there is some information that they get on the residential side that they don't get on non-residential side, and so they're trying to just make it the same. And I haven't been able to attend any of those meetings to understand more about it. I could try to get some written report out of the assessor's office?
I can just ask them. I'll ask them directly. I'm, I'm in favor of anything that chips away at that silly law.
I agree.
So I, I support this.
And I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. Uh, our, uh, county clerk attended that meeting for me.
Okay.
Next is item J, consideration of a resolution R twenty-four forty-six, authorizing the submission of application for airport aid to the FAA, Rebecca Loft. So this is, um, let me find it. This is an application that would be a ninety-five-five, uh, ninety-five percent, um, from the, um, state and five percent, um, from the county, and this would be funding, um, to do the, um, the parking lot and some other areas that we haven't been able to receive grant funding for. And so this resolution would, um, allow submission of that application, and then, um, like all of the other, um, the aviation-related grant agreements we get, it authorizes me to sign all of those documents once they arrive. So this is just another avenue that Rebecca has discovered to be able to, to do some, some additional work we need done out there. Questions, comments? Item K, consideration of a resolution, of resolution R twenty-four forty-seven, a budget adjustment request, Robert.
Good morning, Chairman Ponse and Commissioners. The budget adjustment request, otherwise known as a BAR, is specifically to adjust the airport for an airport improvement program grant that was previously approved. We need to establish the budget authority. And then there's also several volunteer fire departments on here. I think, I believe Chairman Ponse asked earlier in the meeting about where we are in equipment and other items needed for the volunteer fire departments. I've been working with Mr., uh, Mr. Groves and the chiefs for the volunteer fire departments. What we're trying to do is, is get a truer picture of the budget needs this fiscal year, and we're also trying to spend down some of their carryover balances that are starting to accumulate. So we submitting, well, as, I believe I prefaced in the, uh, budget approval board meeting that we would probably be submitting quite a few, uh, bars or budget adjustment requests this fiscal year, and I've been working with several departments, not just the volunteer fire departments, to get a better, accurate assessment of their budget needs and to try to true up their budget. So this is an effort to allocate some of the carryover balances for the volunteer fire departments and make sure they have the needs that they, the, make sure they have the authorization for the needs that they're gonna need for equipment maintenance, building maintenance, bunker gear, and just different items that I've been working with the di- different fire chiefs. Any questions?
Well, I'm trying to look at the chiefs in the back row. Does this, does this address concerns I know you've had, particularly Chief Downing?
Well, I'm talking to Robert, and, um, we're, we're gonna get together this afternoon, and I got a couple items in here that I'm looking at.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's good enough for me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, item L, consideration of resolution R twenty-four forty-eight, authorizing acceptance of grant in MDOT, a Division of Aviation for crockseal at the Grant County Airport. This is in the amount of sixty-eight thousand and twenty dollars. Rebecca mentioned this in her report, this is the funding to do the crocksealing on the taxiway. Item M, consideration of resolution R twenty-four forty-nine, um, US Air Force airspace, Commissioner Brown?
Thanks, Charlene. Uh, I hope my fellow commissioners are aware that the Air Force is once again proposing to use airspace, uh, over Grant County, over the Gila Forest, and over, uh, the Gila Wilderness, which is also, of course, in Catron County, uh, for, for training flights, for expanded training flights. Uh, their proposal calls for, uh, lower ceiling of a hundred feet for these flights, uh, calls for a low ceiling of five thousand feet for supersonic flights, um, calls for an increase in the use of flares and chaff dropped as part of these training exercises, uh, similar to the proposal that we had from Holloman Air Force Base. Uh, and so this resolution is similar to the resolution that this commission passed, opposing the Holloman proposal. Um, there are some important differences, and I don't know how much you guys wanna talk about that. Uh, this resolution actually focuses on asking the Air Force to consider a number of issues, uh, the effect of these flights on archaeological structures in the wilderness and in the monument, uh, the effect on, uh, livestock, both penned livestock and livestock that might be driven, uh, and horses, of course, carrying people who could be startled, this could have an effect on humans.
effect on humans, and, uh, ask them to consider the conflict in national values that this represents. As a nation, we've decided to set certain areas, uh, for wilderness. Uh, these areas are to be untrammelled by human presence. They are to provide solitude and a different experience, uh, for our citizens. Uh, and the use of these areas for overflights conflicts directly with that expressed national value. Um, I think it's all fairly clear. I hope the resolution is clearly written, and, um, I welcome any questions or comments you might have.
I have a question. Uh, is the Air Force coming tomorrow?
Tomorrow, they're coming to Silver City. They'll be at the Global Resource Center for a public hearing on their proposal.
At what time?
Five to eight.
Five to eight? I wasn't remembering. It was five to five, or?
Five to eight at the Global Resource Center, and the air, that'll be, they'll be coming from, uh, Tucson this time.
Tucson and Luke. Where's Luke? So Davis, Monpan, Luke, there are three Air Force bases involved in this. Two of them are based in Tucson, one's a joint base, and, uh, the other, I forget exactly where it's located, too, the two.
Okay. Five to eight.
And we're talking, it's not all wilderness, right?
No, by no means is it all wilderness. Um, the wilderness happens to be my particular concern. Uh, that's where I feel like the, the conflict in values is, is most clear. But, uh, you know, there have been fires started on private land by flares dropping, uh, and so it's by no means just the wilderness that's of concern.
Okay. Because, uh, yeah, you know, mountain biking, cycling, mountain biking aren't allowed really in the wilderness. That's what I was asking, but.
No, that's correct.
I would like to see here, because of the experience I've had when they've done maneuvers in one area that I hunted with helicopters, um, I'd like to see, as far as I can see right now, I need to read it a little bit better, but, uh, hunting, horseback riding and hunting, because that does play a big role in, in, in our, what our hunters have to deal with. You know, our horseback riding, um, I don't know if, if, how many people have been on horseback when a helicopter or jet flies right over you? It's not, it's, 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 you know, the horse and, and the rider, the safety that it poses to them. Um, so if we can add that in there, if you don't mind. I think it's under B, public safety, low-level overflights can potentially severe impacts on activities such as horseback riding, cycling, mountain biking, hiking.
At hunting?
Happily, because of, uh, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, what we don't, some people really don't look, the impacts it has on wildlife. You know, that, that does have a, a pretty good impact on that and, uh, you know, on a pack string of horses, mules, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
And then I'll read it some more for, for Thursday.
That's a good, good addition. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners, on that?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that concludes your agenda.
Is Commissioner Edwards still with us?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Edwards, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, just to say that, um, on the flyovers, I would like to, uh, hear what they say tomorrow, so that's timely, uh, that they're coming. Um, yeah, so if anybody cares, I have mixed feelings. I, I know that there, I can verify that there were fires started on, uh, private and public land, and that last time, the denial by the officials that were here from the Air Force was, um, uh, pretty arrogant that that didn't happen, when I feel very strongly that it did. Um, I would like to hear their reasoning for, um, needing to use that space. I, I recognize the threats, and I've been on a horse when they fly by. It's been a long time ago, and it's a good thing it wasn't recently, or it could have been an accident, because when you're young, you can jump off a horse pretty fast, but, um, some of the other, um, potential threats, I think, might mean more to others than some of my constituents, but, um, it, I think it's important in the, in the, in, to recognize, uh, our need for national defense, and I'd like to hear what their reasoning is along those lines for needing that space as opposed to not needing it. I also recognize the size of the federal government, the US military's not excluded from that in any way, and they, you know, what, when decisions are made on a national level in Washington DC, it can really not take into consideration our needs or even their own needs when it's made on that high of a level. So, uh, look forward to seeing what they have to say tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Medina.
The only thing I have is that, just a reminder this weekend, the CPC has their event out of Fort Beard that includes a three-k and a five-k run and a bunch of events for kids, and, um, just reminding everybody to go down and support them. That's all I have.
Commissioner Brown.
Nothing else. Thank you.
You know, I'm, just a little bit on, on, uh, just what Commissioner Billings said, you know, I understand the need for training, and I don't have a problem with, with their training. I, I just, you know, have a lot of concerns about, you know, people using our wilderness and, 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 you know, a lot of my concerns are with the ranchers and their cattle and, you know, we only, we also have a lot of guides that just do nature, I guess, guides and, and, uh, and their animals and what, what it poses on them. I just don't understand that they continually come, come this way when last time, uh, Grant County said no, so, um, but I'll, I'll look at it a little closer there. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay, meeting, hold on. Meeting adjourned.